Worked on Tuesday.
I don't know.
Cool. Great, well, but I got him. I'm so bad just looking at what she said. I came up to try to grab him and then he scared me so I went ah and I hit him with a towel and then flew all around and then he went back and honked at me.
I do now.
She called me also, so I was like, oh yeah. If you do that, you may.
Which one of these do I need to select though?
Political.
The TV is.
This is okay, alright.
No, I mean, they make all sorts of. They squeal.
Now we're now.
Cancel.
Here, okay.
No.
Can't spot gallon bucket of water.
Oh, right.
It's true.
They're done. I try to.
We're ready when you are.
Okay, we're calling meeting to order, start with pledge of allegiance. Like.
Pledge allegiance in the flag of the United States.
To the Republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, universal, liberty and justice for all. Roll call.
Mockler.
Here.
Graylobe.
Here.
Brady.
Here.
TZ.
Here.
Gilbertson.
Here. Any conflict of interest declarations? Hearing non-approved agenda?
Will be approved.
So I get. Portion of a second, look for the discussion. Hearing then, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Both same sign, motion passes. Uh, visitors to be heard. Look like we have anybody? Like. Okay, I guess if you've looked at it, uh, you noticed that I had just basically kept everything the same as last year. I do with the new building coming up and other people requesting stuff that. I probably shouldn't this year, so um. My bigot. Insurance went down because we only got one drone now. I put the travel out because our conference for the next three years is out west. Yeah, so the stuff that I can control. The budget went up two hundred and fifty dollars. That's all I answer any questions that you have.
It's not as straightforward as it gets. Thanks Drew, we keep an eye this Thursday, appreciate it.
Okay.
Yeah.
It is this line.
Yeah, but it is. Yeah, it is there, so alrighty.
Thank you.
Thanks. You're gonna be that easy?
Ah. I wish. Alright. So salary, wages, insurance, et cetera, that's um, the, just the five percent. Um, I do still have some budgeting for office sitting as needed. Um, next year anticipating during conference and then potentially during school in twenty twenty six, we'll need someone to. Come and watch the office for us again, so I'm leaving that. Budget in there as extra salary. Um. The kind of jumping down into professional services and fees is where. Stuff that I'm. Looking at kind of starts. So professional services and fees, I have been considering adding. An I double A O membership just for the director. Um, that is the International Association of Assessing Officers, it gives us um, some pretty good discounts on workshops. Um. We are required to, for training have. Um, so many continuing ed credits and I double A O offers a lot of those. Um, so that would just give us some discounts in those areas as we're all working on our certification. Um, but I've realized that my notary line is in there, so we also have. Notaries in our office and that's something that's once every seven years. So I think that if we use it for a notary when we need it and then the years that we don't. Um, I can just use that for the membership within that line. Um, publishing, no changes. Let's see, beacon and pictometry went up three percent. Um, that line is just your three percent increase as per the support um contracted increases. Um. From, if you're looking at the three year average and why it went up in twenty five and then continues to go up in twenty six. Pictometry and beacon. Do bring money back in, but I think it's important that we budget for the full amount. So we do still have partners with pictometry, um, so we aren't bearing a hundred percent of that burden ourselves. Um, beacon, we obviously have subscribers, I talked to Rhonda and I think we bring in between the two of them around sixteen thousand dollars a year gets brought back in. Um, but I don't think that's a good enough reason for me to only budget thirty thousand when it costs us forty three. Um.
That's just really just more accurately reflecting instead of the net. Amount, this is all the cost side and the revenue side is just reflected elsewhere.
Yep, and that money does go back to the general fund, it doesn't come back to me, so. Um, repairs and maintenance, I just keep five hundred dollars in case we have an emergency computer break or something like that. Uh, data processing is the line where it really starts to get dicey. So the first big change is, um, I know you guys kind of talk software on Tuesday, we have a lot of software in our office. And the way I see it is this kind of replaces extra staffing needs, right? Um. We are well under the standard for how many people we should have in our office per our parcel count and our workload. However, the software that we have takes workload away. Beacon saves us the work of probably half a person um, or more. Um. So, within data processing, our first software that we're kind of looking at changes is Esri. It's our mapping software, this is all the GIS that we do for the whole county. Parcels, whatever. They are no longer allowing us to have the licenses we have. So they're migrating away from a desktop hosted software to a cloud-based software. And with that migration to online, our old user type licenses are going away. Those three user licenses we have are going up um, from three hundred a piece to five hundred a piece. So that's six hundred dollars right there, um.
It, is that, um, so that's just, is that a portion of our Esri, Esri licenses that's used by your office, cause that, cause this planning and zoning also use Esri line?
No.
License, no.
They did in the past, um, we were able to get. We had four a while ago. I can't remember if it was last year or the year before I got rid of that fourth license knowing this change was coming. Um, so worked through that with Esri when I came into the office to get rid of it. Drew never really used it, we got it for him and he never really used it. In the past, you would have one that was like your primary user and then you'd had secondary user accounts that were um significantly less in money and then last year it went to. Everybody was over three hundred a piece and now it's going to five hundred a piece. Um. They are looking at trying to taper off. Those costs, they've heard a lot of squawk, obviously, um, but I don't know when. Sort of. The big jump will taper um, from their email, it was a, it was a corporate, they sent it to everyone, hey, we hear you. So um, that's, that's one change. The next one is proval, five percent increase, it's just your software increases, good chance we won't need it for all of twenty twenty six. However, if we do need it, I can't be without my valuation software. Um, so proval is twelve thousand dollars roughly, um, there's a more exact amount in my budget line, but. That is just for our Kama software. Um, as we work through the conversion, I foresee us needing to look back at some of the stuff we have in proval as well, but again, that's twelve thousand dollars that will go away. Either in twenty seven or twenty eight.
And we own all the data that's in proval, that's going to get migrated over in the accessible system whenever that's completed?
Yes.
Okay.
Yep.
And then at that time, are we like in long? You know, can we, can we cancel it?
Yes.
Mid-year if we manage to?
It's um, we, when we initially migrated proval back in twenty twelve, there was a five-year agreement for conversion then. And then each year after that is a one-year agreement, so. Um, pay those in December each year, so again, will I need it in my twenty six budget, I'm not sure, will we be done with it by December? Hopefully, but if we need it. I can't not have it. Um, so in addition to proval, you have your Marshall and Swift, so Marshall and Swift is the cost table that they use for evaluation. Um, we will be having to pay for Marshall and Swift in both proval and the new one because Marshall and Swift is its own thing that's used through your Kama system.
So we have to double pay for it?
Yes, but the one in proval is a twenty thirteen cost table, so costs significantly less than the new twenty twenty. Whatever cost tables we're going to in the other one, so it's. Around two thousand dollars because it's based on parcel account. So.
For the old, for the old.
For the old one, yep. Um, so that's another, like I said. Two to three thousand dollars, so about fifteen thousand in proval that we may or may not need. Um, but again, I'd rather budget for it than not have it. Uh, software services, I have conversion fees in there, Patty is helping with the formulas for stuff. Um, she's our backup through assessment notices next year, so I anticipate we should be done with Bossa Nova. By, well, I guess abstracts in May, so May of twenty six is when I'm hoping to be. Fully converted from that side of things. It's another one of those double fees that I need for twenty six that will be gone in twenty seven and moving forward. Um. And then real estate tracker, that's Lisa's software, she has all the read-write options, we just have. Read only, so we are able to access her database but not change it, and that's thirty dollars per license per month. Um. And then catalyst is kind of the big one, that's why it's jumping, conversion fees are not ongoing, they're one time and um. The project charter that I attached to it kind of outlays how they would break it down by percentage, but the overall. Cost at the end of it is a hundred and one thousand dollars. Um, and I worked with them to try and. Move most of that into twenty six just because I didn't have a lot of it in my twenty five budget. But do you guys have questions about catalysts?
Find us what catalyst does exactly.
It replaces both proval and bossa nova. So.
And one hundred and two thousand is like the first year conversion cost and then there's the ongoing cost to be substantially less?
Yes, ongoing costs are around thirty thousand dollars and then you have that Marshall and Swift table that's. In addition. So at the end of the, I should have included the contract. So our first year, because we have to tie it into Marshall and Swift, our Marshall and Swift cost is around eight thousand dollars in our first year. So twenty seven plus eight is. Thirty five thousand, so that's about what it'll be moving forward.
Maybe a little bit less a year after that.
Uh.
No.
No.
The Marshall.
It'll be thirty five thousand, but again, we're replacing all of our proval, all of our bossa nova. Um, again, you're getting bossa nova, which is Patty has been absolutely fantastic to us. And spoiled us richly, um. And again, when I was looking for softwares, this was the most affordable one I could find. Um, and we're looking at going from only. Eighteen to twenty thousand a year to thirty five thousand a year, so yes, my overall data processing is probably going to go up fifteen thousand. Ongoing. But we're getting what we pay for, we're getting better support, we're getting current cost tables. We're getting a software that will work from beginning to end and be housed all within. One software, not two, removing double entry, which will save a lot of time on my staff. And. The alternative is hiring two and a half, I mean, by standards, I should have four and a half to five people in my office. So thirty five thousand for a software and cutting back one and a half people is.
Possible.
Yeah.
So all these things grouped together, that's where you're getting that hundred and ten?
Yes.
Just a. Guess for next year, where do you think that would be with?
I'd anticipate somewhere around thirty five, forty.
Okay. Plus the fewer people.
Hey. Um. Next. Oh, go ahead.
Then part of that, Alice, so the hundred and two thousand isn't all on this year, right? Some of it is on, some of it was.
So.
Already in your twenty twenty five budget, this is, so it's just a portion, a large portion of that is contributing.
Correct.
I was like, there's more numbers here than add up.
There's a lot of numbers.
Gotcha, yeah.
Yep, yep. Any other questions on that line? Okay, um, supplies and materials, last year I shifted my mailing over to professional services and fees and I missed a line. So that's why that one's going down. Um. And then. Travel and conferences going up, um, typically we budget for room rate of about one twenty a night. That has not been the case, the last several conferences in schools, the room rate has been closer to one fifty a night. Um, and just all of our hotels that we need for, like I mentioned, O H E, if we go to peer, I have to have that budgeted. Um, schools and conferences are required for our certification. Um. Workshops, it's those continuing ed credits, which we can do more of them online if I have that um, I double A O membership, so.
What was the cost on the I double A?
It's like three, two hundred, three hundred dollars, it's not much.
Oh, for a year?
For a year, yep.
Okay, so that actually might net out to a net positive with the same.
It reduces the workshop costs from roughly around eighty dollars down to fifty dollars a piece. So. And if we need twelve credit hours each, so, yeah.
It's county employees who don't get state rates, sir.
I've asked, I ask every time.
They don't give us state rates.
I'm so used to the university, that's why I asked.
I bet luck with that.
Yeah, I thought that was for.
For hotels.
We should.
Yeah, I thought that that was like, uh, we're like buying off their bait essentially or something.
I've asked several hotels and they always say no. The only time we get a state rate is if one of the state agencies books. The block of rooms at the state rate and we happen to get in under that block.
Yeah, that's not right.
That doesn't sound.
Yeah, that's weird, cause I used to get state rates all the time when I was at the university.
Can you write us a scary letter, please?
Yeah, I can look into, I, in fact, I, I have had recently. It's been about fifty fifty for me, so it's just some hotels have honored it, some haven't.
All our schools and conferences are run through our Association of Assessing Officers, so all our room blocks are under that. Department of Revenue teaches. But it's through the association that we pay the teachers and everything.
When we go to like convention. You know, we usually book under the block if we can. And it's not state rate. Now, the Secretary of State's office, when they bring us to peer for election-related stuff, it's always the state rate because they book. So. I've asked for it before and. Most of the hotels have said no.
Not the state.
Yeah.
So.
Yeah, that's different.
That doesn't mean it's all under government, yeah.
It's tax exempt, we get tax exemption on everything, but.
Right. Yeah, but because we're not a state-operated, you know, agency. Hotels don't like to give it.
Not a national state's interest.
Maybe that's why. Yeah, I, I never even contemplated it, but uh, yeah, I mean, I think that, and ultimately, I think it's really up to. The hotel, whether or not they're going to honor a state rate anyway, they think in law mandates it.
Not that I know of. I used to work in the hotel business before, way back before here, but. It was just always up to us.
They've also started trying to rotate where it's held, it's not always in peer, I think that has to do with it too. It's like when you're in peer and it's every year, it's.
But even the rates for convention and stuff have gone up recently at, at like the Ramcoa and, you know, wherever they have it.
Like our conferences last year was in Mitchell. And you'd think Mitchell would have enough space, but hotels were awful, she had to have room blocks at like five different hotels just to have room blocks for everyone.
Keep asking.
Oh, I do. I do, and they might tell me no, but I do ask, so.
Um, but also within the traveling conference, our school fees have increased, they used to be three fifty for a week, now they're five hundred. So, school fees went up, um, we've got newer staff that are all within certification, so we need all those trainings. Um, we're also required to take I double A O courses, you have to take five of them before you can't and I double A O courses are worth, are more expensive when you take them at school. Um, the U S P A P training is up in the air, like I mentioned on Tuesday, we no longer have our instructor in the state, so we're looking. They had someone at conference that could potentially be our new. Uniform standards guy, he's from Florida. So now instead of somebody from Rapid City, you're looking at bringing in someone and. Having him here, um, I need, once again, I need the seven hour, I've passed the fifteen. Melissa and Alfonso both need the fifteen hour and the seven hour in the next five years. So, travel and conferences just, it's always going up. Um. But any other questions on those? My utilities line is no changes, phone copier, that kind of stuff, doesn't, I'm in a. Five-year contract on my copier, it's the same rate for the next four years yet. Um. Books, no changes, it's another one of those that hopefully, knock on wood, we don't have to rehire again next year, so we won't need new books next year. But if we need them and I don't have it, I'm out. Um. Furniture and minor equipment, I did increase that minimally for. If we're moving upstairs next year and need additional storage or to change anything, um. Office chair, that kind of thing, I, I think my plan for furniture next year, I always like to tell you, this year I budgeted for shelving and a laminator, I found a really cheap shelf and we found two. Um, free filing on marketplace, so that was awesome, um, so I'll hopefully be getting a laminator this year, next year my plan is. Chair mats, which are surprisingly expensive, um, when we go upstairs, cause a lot of times when you peel those up off the floor, they just crumble. Um. Automobile, automobile, no changes, um, just because we're not going to be in the north part of the county next year, so. Any other questions on my budget?
What are, oh, what are the main limiting factors on the speed of conversion, it seems like there's a lot of costs associated with. However long that takes, the faster we get it done, the faster we stop double paying, so is it, is it mostly staff time to devote to it or is it more um, on their end? They're doing data stuff and they tell you when it's completed or something or?
Uh, it's data stuff, it's can we read it from this program and pull it over, they're pulling everything over in C S V files, how is it coded? What, I mean, it's all above my pay grade, I don't, I don't know coding, I don't know computer coding, the other thing is they don't have it written for state-specific software yet. Um, I will tell you that those that do have softwares they're converting to that are already written for state-specific are also struggling, they're on years two and three. I mean, we've experienced it with T-Tech, but um, I know there are. Counties where they did not have a software, they're having to. Literally hand-enter every single property record, um, you're resketching every building, you're entering how many bushels on this grain bin, how old it is. Um, if you're missing that data, if it pulls over and it doesn't have it, you have to dig through the old paper files and fi- figure it out and enter it. Um, right now, we're struggling with sketches because all of our sketching in the past has been, um, you sketch it in and then it's an image. It's not a data string.
Oh.
So, I'm not sure that I can get our sketches out as a data string to put it into the new software.
That sounds actually like something that machine might help you with a little bit. Converting a, converting an image into a, like a. Layers for like.
Yeah, so um, that's one thing with houses in particular, I mean. Yeah, if you've got a multi-level house, you've got all these little chunks.
So it's, so it's, so there's work happening in your office and then there's work happening in Catalis's offices, wherever that is.
Yeah, yep, um, so we have monthly meetings, I meet with them every Tuesday, the first Tuesday of every month, then we email back and forth quite a bit. I have my sandbox now, I can log in online and play with the software, um, so they're, they're, I'd say they're moving at a good clip. Um, but there is still going to be a lot of manual data entry and verification, so. Last one took seven years, I'm hoping this one can get it done in one and a half, two. And then the other thing is they aren't monthly fee, I mean, this conversion looks like monthly fees because as they keep doing data passes and bringing more in, they're charging me incrementally. But if my existing softwares, it's one-time fee, like proval, I pay them in December. So I can't pay for half of a year.
Yes. I don't like it, but I understand.
I know. I don't either. Like I said, I was combing through it, trying to figure out, I'm like, well, I could cut this and ask for it to be this later, but even that, I'm only coming up with about seven thousand dollars of room. Tried really hard to keep that down, last year we turned in something like twenty thousand, most of that was within the salary line because we were short-staffed for four months.
Right.
So. Anyway. Any other questions? Okay, thank you.
Morning. Thanks, Scott. So, um. Happy to report. I found some errors in my. Stuff.
Oh, that's the best news ever.
Yeah, and so it's going down instead of up. Um, I was trying to do this in the heat of the R F P battle for. For the, this project here, so I apologize for that, I'm glad I looked over things and I found it. And I know, uh, Carrie had taken. Uh, my budget for here and my, what I'm thinking for the L E C and kind of combined it, I don't, do not have that paperwork in front of me. But, um. I'll start with the, uh. I'll start with the courthouse budget request for twenty twenty six. And if I go down to, uh. Let's find my lines here, line item, uh. Government improvements. Um. I don't know. Where that, where that figure came up, well, I'm pretty sure I know where the figure came up, I got an extra zero in there. So under that, uh. The general government billing improvements, this should be a hundred and forty thousand.
Oh.
So.
Oh, hey.
But don't get too excited though.
Okay.
So I do have.
Stuff in there.
So that, that million third, million thirty has the nine hundred and fifteen thousand for.
Okay.
The renovations, so that's.
Okay, okay, thanks for bringing that up, I forgot about that.
I like it.
Well, darn it anyway.
I know.
Thanks for trying, Scott.
Yeah, well, yeah.
That's the building improvement capital.
Okay, yeah, I guess.
Building improvements.
Thanks for bringing that to my attention, I forgot about that.
So then it should be.
Yeah.
Yeah.
For these two.
So it's probably accurate.
For these two projects, okay, all right, so. Um.
So that is probably accurate, but.
Yeah. General government billing, that whole, that line for equipment. Um. What I did was I just carried it across from this year. Which was pretty heavy. This was pretty heavy this year because I didn't realize that the equipment out there was coming off the F F and E, so, but anyway. I just carried that across, it shouldn't have. I, I don't, I put twenty thousand in there, I don't even see needing that, I mean, my gosh, we got just about everything under the sun. Already. We got a new mower this year, we got a new equipment out there, so, you know.
You've got two hundred thousand, right?
Yeah.
That's the building furnishing and minor.
Yeah.
Some of that for. Till we can drop that to twenty?
Well, cause everything out, I don't picture need anything out there. You know, we got quite a bit off the F F and E. I mean. I don't see, I don't have any big line items. I mean, you know, might need to replace a vacuum cleaner or. Bump up.
We bought the tool cat for out there.
Yeah.
All the attachments.
Yeah. And we bought the custodial equipment. You know, stuff like that. So, I, what I did was just drug it across for some reason. I don't know why, but.
I mean, the only thing we would change here is because we never changed, we never traded mowers, did we?
Yep.
We did.
We did that this year. So, we got a new mower over here this year. So, yeah. I don't really see any big ticket items. So, that was a pretty big one.
Yeah, you can, you can do here and the new building with that same, is that the plan or?
Yeah. And the tool cat has a finished mower.
Oh, okay.
For it too. But yeah, we had, got, I got the trailer. Got the trailer from the county. I just gotta get it north of Yankton and get the axles under it. Then allow somebody to transport it back and forth with the mower.
So what are you thinking for equipment?
I, I don't see any reason, any big purchases. I just put twenty thousand there just in case something was gonna pop up, but. Like I say, we got all new equipment out there. Looking good here. Yeah.
Just so that I'm sure though, the furniture that for the needs, the treasurer's office and state's attorney's office, is that going to be incorporated into the building improvement dollar amount then?
That should be in the project.
Supposed to be, right.
That's, that shouldn't affect here, right?
No, this, that, the, the.
He's talking about when we remodel.
The old enforcement.
Yeah.
That could be, should be part of the six hundred thousand.
Right. That's what I'm saying. So it shouldn't come in this line.
I wanted to, yeah, just, cause I just saw, you know, building furniture and I just wanted to make sure that there was any.
That's what I asked about Rhonda and her desks and all that stuff. That'd be in the same bucket.
And that's all in the line right before that?
No.
No, that's in the six.
It's in the project.
Well, it's in the million.
Right, yeah.
And nine hundred fifty miles.
Yes, exactly. So I understand. Yeah, when I look at that building furniture, minor equipment, I just always figured that was for my department. I didn't think broad.
Yep.
Scope for the entire courthouse.
And, uh, in that line, so six hundred thousand is the, the build-out budget? Is that right? And.
The, that, in that's.
I was just wondering about the jump from six hundred to nine.
It's actually nine fifteen.
Nine fifty for both projects.
Yeah, because.
Oh, for the courtroom as well.
Yeah.
Right.
As the law enforcement remodel.
Yeah.
We have to budget for the whole courtroom project?
Because it's a reimburse.
Yeah.
Yeah. And then the grant shows on the revenue side.
Yeah.
So.
And that's an eighty, twenty?
Seventy-five. Uh, seventy-five.
Twenty-five.
Five.
Yeah, that's right.
So, any, any questions on that? I mean, basically I just looked at my averages, my averages and.
Insurance.
I had a figure. What's that?
The insurance line, does that represent then the additional cost of the new law enforcement center being added to the rules or?
No.
I, I added it under the, that, uh. Four-two, four-two-one, zero-zero-zero, um, that government building insurance. I added in what, just an estimate of, you know, what I thought the jail might be.
Something we would likely be including in whatever our negotiated leases or how will we arrange the payment from the city's area.
Right.
Yeah.
Well, yeah, yeah, they're gonna pay, they're gonna pay a portion of that.
That's the same way with supplies and materials. You're budgeting for everything and then there'll be a reimbursement agreement out at the new center.
Oh, for the police department?
Yeah.
Yeah.
But you budget for all of it.
I budget for all of it. Yeah. And that, oh, there's, I got a separate L E C here, budget for out there. Uh, we'll keep track. We'll track everything.
Okay.
So we have a good accurate idea and cost of what it's cost, cost us around that building. But yeah, I've, uh, talked to the chief Brady and I've talked to Andy and they have a formula worked out. I don't know if has, if there's ever been a conversation with, uh. Uh, city about the, about it yet or not, but, and I had a pretty long meeting with her, explaining where I'm coming up with my numbers, how I came up with my numbers, we're out there. You know, so I went through the whole thing. Took my staff here, supplies, et cetera, et cetera, did the whole square footage thing and yeah, so. I think we're, we're good to go on that part.
Be on the, on the wages and the materials and supplies and stuff, but we'll revenue side of all that too.
There'll be what?
Yeah.
Revenue side on that too.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Does it make any sense to anybody to, to divide out the two? You know, previously we really just had this one location and then it's, I imagine kind of hard sometimes to tell what's getting spent on which part of the building. But with a whole separate site and with wanting to track over the next few years, you know, how costs fluctuate there and with the reworking at this site and the cost fluctuating here, being able to disentangle like.
I'm.
Where that's coming from. Is that something?
I'm waiting for legislative audit to tell me how they want me to split that out.
Okay, okay.
There will be two separate budgets, one way or the other. I just, I'm not sure how exactly to do it yet. So, whatever these numbers are. They'll just be split into two budgets. So.
Right, right.
But then that total will be the same.
And over time, we'll be able to see trends.
Yeah. Yeah.
Yeah, I'll keep track of obviously supplies, repairs, all that stuff separately out there. Uh, um, so we'll have a good idea there. And I think it came out to like one-third, two-third split between the city. Um, like, cause I don't know if any of this has been talked about or if it's agreed upon yet, but. Basically, you know, I'll pay for a third of everything, no matter where it is in the building. You know, if a V A V, court's work happening in the sheriff's department, you're still gonna pick up a third instead of. It's just easier that way. So, you know, if the chiller goes down, they'll pick up a third. If something has to be repaired in the jail, they'll pick up a third. Supplies, wages, repairs. Utilities, so.
That makes sense to me.
And sort of stuff, yeah. Kind of overheaded that out there anyway. So, uh, yeah, I mean, uh, my repairs were pretty much dead on last year and I was off on my supplies. So I did some adjustments there, there. So. Things are looking good there, I think. For here.
And you say you have another budget for?
Yeah. For the L E C. Just kind of giving an idea on how things can, monkey wrench gets thrown in my budget real quick. We having trouble with the.
Oh, I combined his two spreadsheets for your seat. So your totals will be both of them combined.
Pretty big jumps if they're.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. Just like, you know. We got a rooftop in it that's called the E R V and it wasn't working properly. So, they had train come in. So, I got a little shell shock yesterday. I sat down and looked at their estimate, estimate to repair it, barely a year out of warranty. Eleven, they want eleven thousand, six hundred bucks to replace a compressor. I thought, which I thought was insane, but, and I'm gonna be, what's that?
Isn't it just two months out of warranty?
Yeah. Yeah. April. So, yeah. So, I'm gonna be doing a little shopping around, see if I can find somebody. We have people qualified in the area to, to work on those commercial stuff. So. Yeah. But anyway, and the L, the L E C is, uh. Like I said, I, what I, how I came up with these numbers and stuff were, um. As far as this, like wages and salaries, that was just, um. I'm gonna figure I'm gonna have two and a half people out there. I figured my salary halftime out there. So, that's where I came up with, with those numbers for that. But when I do a cost per square foot, or it's a courthouse, where this costs, uh. About two dollars and eighty-five cents a square foot for, uh, staffing, for staffing here. So.
So on wages, you figuring, you're figuring two and a half people?
Yeah.
And how many are you paying? You just got one and a half right, or two right now, right?
Well, one point five. Well, myself and John and Lauren at halftime.
Okay. Cause the wages are only going up twelve thousand dollars. That's why I'm wondering, how do we add another person for twelve thousand?
Oh, did I not add that one in?
I get kind of lost in that area. I can rely on Carrie quite heavily to bail me out of that stuff.
Let me pull up my spreadsheet for payroll here.
We were spending thirty thousand less.
One sixteen, yeah. Why, actually I think it's just the math in the end, isn't it? Cause it's, the actual is one sixteen, four oh eight. Now it's.
Well, it was, uh, one forty-eight, seven ninety was the budget in the mountain last year, but we were under that by thirty, thirty-two thousand, right? The previous year. So like maybe, maybe there's just some room in the budget.
So I have. Still. No, I think the one sixty-one is right. I think that's right because I have, I have Scott and I have John and Lauren. And then I've got the new hires. I think that's right. Unless this spreadsheet's not adding them right. Oh, no, the payroll spreadsheet didn't, didn't, the formula didn't add them right. So it should be two forty-five, seven thirty-four.
Say that again, Eric, please.
Two forty-five, seven thirty-four. Yeah, the payroll spreadsheet formula wasn't.
That's. Twenty-six requested it. That's that number.
Yep.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah. And some of that is likely to get offset with some contribution from the city proportion of that. That's a portion of the increase.
Third of it. Like I said, I was figuring half my time out there. And I don't know, at the end of the day. That makes much difference where my time lands here or there. It might make a difference when you're doing the one-third, two-third thing. That happens out there. Well. Yeah, and if we go down professional piece and services, I just look at what I'm doing here and do the score first thing again. That, that number I think is kind of light, but I just kind of went with it. Uh, repairs and maintenance, I just figured a thousand dollars a month and I don't receive. Being that, because it's a brand-new building, might be some little nickel, dime stuff like. Can you hang a plaque here, there, da, da, da. But, I mean, obviously if there's anything directly, directly related to that new building, I'll also be making a phone call to get. Take a squirt away by this. Uh. Toss and furnace filters, et cetera, stuff like that. And then your custodial supplies. But there shouldn't really be a. Whole lot going on as far as repairs out there. So like I said, I came up with my material costs based off my square footage here. Utilities, I didn't, utilities, like. When I started looking at utilities, I, when I looked at the, when I looked at the utility line for the courthouse under the whole courthouse budget. It was, it was that little over a million dollars year. I don't know, I'm not quite sure what all was under that umbrella there. But I know in my budget, I do utilities and I'm not sure what is all underneath it or my, my department. You know, we're looking at, uh, actuals for, for, uh, twenty twenty-four was, uh, about thirty-one thousand. When I look at the, like I said, when I look at the utility under the entire courthouse, it was a little over a mil.
How's that? Where are you seeing that? Uh, the, the, the over a mil line.
When, where isn't that?
I'm, I'm seeing the, like, the budget amount of utilities this year is, uh, sixty-nine thousand, seven forty is the budget request for twenty twenty-six. Is that jive with what you were?
For the L E C?
That looks like that's combining both the L E C.
Oh, is it? Okay, okay.
Yep.
Okay.
Yeah, she combined ours.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
But I don't know where the million is.
Yeah, okay.
Okay. What's that represent?
Like I said, I was looking, when I was looking at the. When I looked at the. I got the entire budget printout, the entire courthouse, there's a line item says utilities. But I don't know what all falls underneath there. You know, there's a phone service and, you know. Communication, technology services. I don't know what all falls under that umbrella.
Basically the. Gas and electric and water, um. Internet and your office's phones.
That's in my department.
Yep.
Yeah.
But while your, yes, your office's phones, the rest of the offices pay for their phones. So, that gets split out, but.
Then, then the electric and utilities is under mine.
Uh huh.
But then each department has their own. Has their own line item.
You have the phone service.
Or phone service, basically. Yep.
And I was looking under the, I was looking under the total. Utilities for the courthouse.
Where were you seeing that? Was that?
I thought I saw it on that budget, budget for twenty twenty-four or something, but. And that's.
Okay, I'm, I'm not seeing, I'm not seeing it looking good. I don't want to see that. I'm not looking for it. I.
No, it's, uh.
I want to not see that.
Usually, usually utilities for the courthouse or for the facility is about thirty thousand, um, per year. So. You're looking at two facilities then.
Did we see any improvements with the, with the, like, the new boiler? I mean, I was assuming that those would have efficiency improvements over the older system.
Haven't quite been a year on there yet. Haven't quite been a year on there yet to see.
They're definitely short.
Yeah. See, they definitely gotta be. Those things hardly run at all.
Yeah.
I like.
And we tightened the envelope too, a little too, did we do some stuff on those?
No.
A while ago.
A while ago.
Yeah.
That's.
They never really helped.
Okay. Yeah.
Close. Maybe have a breeze. Fuck, the wind's a little bit, right? The wind still comes through the sill.
Yeah. That, um. We're, those boilers provide heat for this building also. So, not really looking at apples to apples. We look to the past. Well, this, they're all in one meter, right, Carrie? You just. You, uh, who's the safety center pays a portion or something? I think Andy has.
Of how that works.
Think Andy has a formula figured out.
Yeah.
Based on.
Yes.
Based on square footage, what, what?
Yep. It's based on square footage, but yeah, there's a spread.
But it's still the same, same meter. So, one read. So, should get a pretty accurate idea. But, yeah, those boilers just kind of just.
Of course, we had a pretty mild winter too.
Yeah.
Take a lot of heat. And a pretty, pretty warm summer. It's not taking a lot of heat this summer either.
No.
Imagine that's correct. Although it's working. And today they'd be very efficient.
And today they'd be very efficient.
We did, like, Harry, and we're on everything. Do they see too big thing? So, you know. Hoping that that was also summer efficiencies. I think estimates should be pretty tight on what, how much energy the new facility is gonna use, I would assume, right?
I would think so.
Engineered in design, they probably have a pretty good idea.
Be interesting to see, but.
Hopefully a really tight envelope, I imagine.
Yeah.
Should be. We're watching. Doesn't mean that they built it.
Any other questions? I do have a I do have a list of anticipated repairs. Improvements, I guess, anticipated building improvements twenty twenty-six, just kinda go over there, go over with you, just so you kinda know. What some of my figures are under, under that uh building improvements, uh, handrail on the first floor. Uh, I figured some money in for painting in the courthouse, maybe gets a couple more offices painted. Uh, repair some sidewalk trippers. Do some improvements on landscaping. Place a water fountain on third floor. Uh, get the employee table here to match the commissioner's table. Repairs to the retaining wall outside, we didn't do any this year, we did last year and the year before. So that's gonna be coming up, um. Get the windows washed on the building, uh, got that on like a two-year cycle. Um, insulates some pipes in the basement here in the boiler room. We found out that that sewer going out about, after you get outside the building, about twenty feet, that turns back to clay tile, so wanna get that lined. Um, at the four-H building, uh, like to finish painting the offices over there. Um, I got some money figured in for asphalt repairs on the parking lot. I like to get a roof access installed over there, like we have here. And uh, we have some leaking on that canopy right outside the door. And it leaks into the building. That thing's got like a ton of tar on it already, so we're past that. That type of repair, so that's kind of a list of some of the stuff I'm thinking about for twenty twenty-six.
So the asphalt repair at the four-H center?
Well, you know, um, I, if we have to have somebody come in and seal coat it, you know, chip coat it, I need to go over there with uh Brent, have him look at it. Or get it on his schedule, if you will, so when that, if he go, if he has a company, however he determines what that needs. I need to work with him on that and make sure we're maintaining, so it doesn't fall apart so quickly. Well, a year and a half ago, they, the county came in and fixed some holes they were developing, so just wants to stay on top of it.
That's what I was wondering, not that we were gonna hire somebody to repave it weekend ourselves.
No, uh-huh. No, I'm gonna work with Brent on that to, to uh.
That's onto the repairs and maintenance line?
Um, that, that, that stuff, they usually put under the uh building improvements.
Okay, so that's, that's just tacked into that.
Yeah. Yeah. You know, this, this, what I have here tallies out to about a hundred and forty thousand dollars. I didn't know what, really what to put down for asphalt repairs. I think if you had to replace the whole thing, it'd probably be twenty grand, but I'm thinking, you know, if you're coming in and just chip sealing or whatever, it might be, I don't know, be six thousand or less, but I'll be working with Brent on that, so. Get that figured out. Any other questions on anything? Trying to do my best to answer it. Oh.
Thank you.
Thank you. Do you have something around that, that you?
I just can never hear you guys.
That's something I should probably mention to ask Scott to look into. The library's got a similar kind of setup, and I think they just have a single light, light that hangs from the ceiling, and you can hear everybody in there. So I wonder if there's, if there's reworking we could do, so we don't have to, cuz it is terrible when you're online trying to follow what's going on.
I mean, I get you guys, too. It's like, if we're supposed to hear you, you gotta be.
We gotta do like that, yeah.
Now, if you're deep inside, you don't think about.
Well, and having something like that would allow then, if, you know, people online could hear the other half of this conversation, which I'm sure they can't, so.
But if she's online and can't hear us, it's easier to cut her butt.
I see, there's a strategy. All right, I'm sorry, I didn't realize.
I'm trying to update the sheets here, so I can send you out some new ones. It's hard, I don't have my three computer screens, so I'm switching back and forth.
Michael, what was it gonna be to add an employee for you?
Well, pull it up. Harry did all the working as far as retirement benefits, but I can tell you salary. And mine's a little bit unknown because I, I budgeted for hiring a legal secretary entry level. Depending on what that person, you know, entry level, but at like step two, if you would, cuz there's, on the matrix, there's a like a, essentially, I treat it more as like a certified versus a non-certified legal assistant. Other departments also have like receptionists. So it'll just depend on how that person comes in and who are, you know, there's, so I think what I've, I can tell you what I have, though. I have him at forty-nine-nine. That, it would be no more than that or salary alone. And there's a possibility that number's closer to thirty-five.
So you wanted a legal secretary? You also wanted a receptionist?
No, it's, it's, it's one, that person, one person.
Okay.
Yes.
So about sixty-five thousand.
Right. I think that's probably pretty fair.
Cheat, but these, like, retirement line workman's comp? That would be, Carrie would put those numbers in those lines, right?
But that's where the fif- the fifteen thousand.
Yeah.
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 Okay. I can't send these to you guys in a nice PDF, but I'm sending the individual Excel spreadsheets, at least so that you have them to look at. So, um, the cash balance estimation and the provisional budget spreadsheets are probably the ones you really wanna look at.
Which one did you say we wanna look at, provisional budget?
Yep, and the, the cash balance estimation. I just can't.
Question before us.
Without having my three screens, I can't drag and drop and combine and do the things that I, that I do upstairs.
Over one point one six, short, readjusted, is that, am I reading that right?
Yep.
Yep.
And that would get us to zero surplus cash.
Spend your last dollar on December thirty-first, okay.
No, wait.
Two point three seven. All right, the general funds.
Okay, so we've got eleven point six in the general fund budget.
Yeah, which is a two.
What are we, we're short one point three eight.
Yeah. Okay, there we go. This is a cash balance estimation.
That's the yellow section at the bottom.
Right, we, we have some break. Uh, good for now. I want you to be part of this discussion.
Oh.
Cuz I'm about to ask a question that nobody wants. Now she grabs her water bottle.
Yeah.
Making out not water. Get me through the day, Bob. She's looking that big. She got it.
Okay. So I already know your answer, because you're not getting any new employees, but if we don't get new employees, it's easier to remodel. What's more important?
We will complete our work with the staffing we have, but I will be asking for one and a half people, short of being able to find funding for uh, grant funding for that divergent coordinator come July twenty, first of twenty twenty-seven next year.
And I understand that.
Yeah, I mean.
Pick of the can.
Right, look at, and I, I showed you guys on Tuesday, we're, we're severely understaffed. We've done the work, we'll continue to do the work. The amount of people that's going to come to my office that I haven't had to deal with um, in our current location is gonna create more issues, not less, um, but ultimately, the work's gonna get done.
Well, that's why I'm asking, because, you know, which would you rather see? And that's why I said I know your answer, because you're not getting new employees. But I want you to be part of this discussion. But Andy's, you know, he's requested two, and that's about a hundred and thirty thousand that he's requesting. You've requested sixty-five.
Some, some might be inevitable, and I think they probably, I don't know, would be able to do the maintenance on the law enforcement center without additional additional staff there, and I don't know if we can run jail without additional staff there, so.
Oh, I'm not talking no staff. These, these are two new deputies.
Yeah.
So they weren't anything to do with.
Yeah, not, not counting the jail staff side.
Right, that was.
I just wanted to make sure.
Courtroom security.
That's the courtroom security.
Yep, or what now? That's the two new deputies, kind of the courtroom security.
Yeah, right.
And Andy did say he knew that we understood the budget, and this may not be the year to do it. Right, yeah, but I understand that, too, and that's, I, I struggled with, that's a need, but. Yeah, I'm not saying it's not a need, huh? Yeah, but I think it may be next year.
Brent seemed to have some flexibility in a couple of the items on his capital side.
Yes, I talked to him, and we can get by without the paper, so there's six hundred thousand.
Oh, that's, that's huge.
Yep. Um, Scott pulled a hundred and eighty thousand out of his budget.
We moved back in on the.
Right, but if you took the six, um, I added the eighty-four thousand, almost eighty-four thousand two hundred back in.
Back in.
I come up with eight hundred and ninety thousand that we can add back into the budget.
I can steal about the new pickups, is, is that a need?
We're probably gonna need to budget. He, he said he would get rid of the old one still, keep his, and look at the hereon um, for government surplus for a used pickup. To replace that ninety-eight. So I mean, it wouldn't be the full eighty, but I didn't take the eighty thousand out either. I left that in there.
So Scott, though, I'm showing like eighty-three thousand gain. Cuz I counted that he, he wants two and a half people. Right?
One more.
He has one.
Just one in the new building?
Yep, that added to eighty-four thousand one ninety-nine.
Okay, I didn't, I didn't have that right. One forty-eight, seven ninety, where did I get that?
Cuz he had two forty-five, seven thirty-four is what it should have been. He had the one sixty-one, five thirty-four.
Okay.
Which is a difference of eighty-four one ninety-nine.
Andy's also asking for a part-time secretary.
So I didn't, I only asked him about the two deputies. So I guess I didn't.
Sure.
Didn't pull that out of there.
I do think that's probably necessary, yeah.
But he's looking for that for the law.
Right.
So I didn't pull anything out of the new, so.
Sure.
But anyway, that gets us to eight, eight ninety.
So, meaning that makes up eight hundred and ninety thousand of the hundred and, what are?
One point three.
One point three, okay.
Yeah, that's awesome. Four ten. That gets the courtroom redone, six hundred thousand for the.
Yeah, and we have no idea what that's gonna accomplish, I mean, we're all hopeful that the six hundred thousand dollar was right, but that was a blind estimation.
Oh, yeah.
And we won't know that number until July twenty eighth. And that's the hard, in my opinion, I think that's the hard part, I mean, there's a chance when we open up those, you know, when we sit down with the firms that we're working with, I mean, we may find out that six hundred thousand dollars is two hundred thousand dollars more than we needed, or that we're severely under budgeted for the, for what we need to accomplish the renovation, and it's unfortunate, but the timing is just two weeks.
Right.
Removed from helping us.
But the four ten only gets us to zero.
Yeah.
What do we need to get to fifteen percent carry positive?
Yeah, with, with those new numbers, with the eight ninety.
Yeah, if we were short four hundred and ten thousand.
Well, here, let's do this, let me. Okay. Update this a little bit, this merger. Okay, um. This is hard to work on this screen, okay, so if we're taking how much out of, out of Brent's budget?
Six hundred.
Okay. And then.
A hundred and eighty out of Scott's?
I already updated his as, as we were talking.
Okay.
Um.
Hundred and thirty out of Andy's?
Hundred and thirty out of Andy's. As a, oh, and then.
Sixty five hundred.
Yeah, I mean, I, I will strongly support another position in my office, I understand you're bound, if my space wasn't constricted, I'm sure this position would have been funded years ago, and it wouldn't even be contemplated today, which is the frustration on my end, cause there's a real need, and going down to this new position is just gonna amplify that need. All that being said, I understand the, the problem that you're in, so, um, I'll continue to support, you know, that request, but ultimately, I understand, you can all do what you can do, and the renovation project is important.
So she already put in Scott's, we're, we're farther than four hundred and ten thousand on it.
Yeah.
Six hundred thousand.
That was over ninety.
Yeah, well, add, on the four ten, add the one eighty back in. That's a six, five ninety.
I can get to a good number here in about two seconds. Wanted to know what we need to get to fifteen percent, is that what you said?
What does that, what is that right now? Those numbers put in, short.
So like minus ten point three four percent? So to get us to fifteen? It falls between two point seven five million and three million.
How much cash on hand would that give us?
And see, my formula is dealing percentages, so. I mean, it's gonna give us a couple million.
On hand?
Yeah.
That's fifteen percent of.
Well, we, we ended.
That much bigger now, isn't it?
We ended, what, here, let me pull this up, hold on.
That's where.
We ended twenty twenty four. At thirteen percent. And that was.
Three, five is what we're using, right?
And that was roughly what I projected that we would have, let's see, let me pull up last year's. Cash balance estimation.
At eight, one point one five mil times fifty percent, one point seventeen.
Yeah, this is.
Forty takes a couple of a lot of.
Under the opt-out. Well, I mean, five hundred thousand would be plenty to have on hand, because there's also three hundred thousand, or how much is built in? You know, there is money that's built into the budget that's not assigned to anything, it's from catastrophic.
So about one point six million would be roughly fifteen percent.
How much do we add into the budget if it's not? You know, there was always that line item that they make you put in.
Um, yep, if you, if you look at the provisional budget spreadsheet that I sent you and go to that means of finance sheet. Um, down at the bottom, in red where it says less five percent, it's about six hundred thousand.
So that's, that's the, uh, statute requires that as a kind of a cushion in case of.
Right.
Rich failure.
Right.
All right, so that, so we've. So even if we project the cash balance was zero at the end of the year, if we are using that six hundred thousand, we actually have six hundred thousand dollars sitting in account.
Yeah, so I guess then fifteen percent then would be, you know, what, one point eight, so I was a little off, I said one point six, I think, so. About one point eight would be about fifteen percent. But you have to consider that whatever we, this, this is why the formula deals in percentages and not dollar amounts, because whatever we have left at the end of the year, we have to have next year's budgets cash applied as well. To get us that percentage. So that's, that's why it gets a little confusing for me when we start talking dollars instead of percents.
Walk through that one more time, I think I follow, yeah.
So whatever we have left at the end of the year.
Okay.
In dollar amount, you have to have next year's cash applied for the budget as well. So up at the top of that means of finance page where it shows the three point five million highlighted in yellow, that's the cash that we have to have at the end of the year to apply to the twenty twenty six budget to balance it. In addition to whatever surplus we hope to keep for emergency, so. That's, that's where the percentages work better. For the formulas, for my brain, um, that's why the state does it the way they do it on these spreadsheets.
Where is it, means of finance, I'm. Page.
So if you go to the provisional budget spreadsheet, the Excel sheet.
Okay.
And then it's, um, down at the bottom, there's that means, means of finance sheet on that, or tab on that spreadsheet.
Okay, okay. So we're, we're still five hundred and ninety thousand, sure, officer. I under, that's right, correct, that's the number I came up with, yes.
Cause if you add that one eighty back to the ten, that's. If we figured that, right?
Remind me what the one eighty was.
That was, that was Scott's, and she had already, uh, updated it on the fly.
Ah, but he thought, yeah.
Yeah. So the Excel sheets.
She quick changed it already.
And we got it, we thought it was still in there.
Gotcha.
Excel sheets that I just sent you already included that.
I know, when I heard that this was all happening, you know, I thought about our building project, whether we could put it off a year, you know, just because, and, you know, I've still been thinking about that, but the only problem with that is, is putting it off is the cost of construction is gonna become far, and then I think about, like, the bathrooms sitting potentially unused for a year, and who knows what kind of problems that's gonna bring up too, so that could be added expenses.
Well, you guys just go there and use them.
There you go, simple solution, but I mean, I ju, I, I have thought about that, and you know, like, would we be smart to put it down the road a little bit, you know, get our cash a little more fluffed up, but I, I just, it's just, I think it's just gonna cost us a lot more money if we put off the project.
Doesn't seem like construction costs are going down anytime soon.
No.
Or even staying the same.
Right.
And are we paying for the ambulance next year in twenty six?
I budgeted for it because it sounded like it would show up end of twenty six, beginning of twenty seven.
But that was just the chassis, right?
Chassis.
I don't know.
It's in the three sixty one.
Yeah.
Yeah. But that's the total bill.
Yeah.
And we've got eighty of it. So I mean, we're only, and I mean, that's what you showed was a two hundred, or a three hundred thousand dollar. I have two hundred and eighty thousand dollars of cost. You know, the city pays us.
Although.
City will pay us at some point. Although.
For budget purposes, though? Yeah, I, I. I mean, I think you're gonna wanna keep that three sixty one in there, cause yeah, what if it does show up at the end of twenty six? Then we've gotta pay for it. With Rhonda, though, I think we've gotta do the remodeling. I just, you know, you leave a building empty for a year.
Just to figure it.
And, and it's, yeah.
So if we do a seven hundred and fifty thousand dollar opt-out. That gives us a hundred and. Sixty thousand dollars in cash. Plus what the city's gonna pay us at some point.
When you're talking what the city is gonna pay us at some point, are you talking like the janitorial contract or the?
No, their lease.
Their lease.
Facility, their lease payment.
Is that gonna go into the bond payment fund or into the general?
It should be the general fund, cause they don't have a bond.
Okay.
We could pull it out of the general fund for that purpose.
Right.
Okay.
Right.
What should you expect that?
We might wanna go into executive session on that, that's, that conversation.
Speculation.
Speculation in private.
We should probably go into executive session, certainly before decisions made regardless for legal purposes.
And contractual.
Yeah. We did a seven hundred and fifty thousand dollar opt-out, it was like that's about a forty two cent, forty three cent.
Yeah, on that second, the second sheet of the cash balance estimation, it'll show you what the levy is gonna be in reach opt-out level.
Not great, but better than about eighty.
Now, none of these needs that we cut are going away, um, but assuming we get the building project done next year, you know, that would really, that's a pretty major thing to not have them next year.
That, that was gonna be my other thought is, of course, with this RFP process, there is a strict budget number, and so if we can't get this work done in that number, we'd have to, I think we'd have to restart the process, um. We, but we won't know, I think that's, I don't know how much consideration this body wants to give to that, I mean, we might find out that this is an eight hundred thousand dollar project, and then will that then be a viable option in twenty twenty six with the opt-out at seven fifty?
I think, yeah, I think something relevant to that is, is to keep our eyes on what today's decision is and what the decision is that we need to make of the total budget before the end of the year, so with, you know, with July twenty eighth, we'll know whether or not that's gonna be feasible or not, so I think that based on that, I lean towards what I consider more conservative in saying, like, let's pass an opt-out that allows us to make this budget work, assuming that that's gonna go through, knowing that just because we have passed the opt-out does not mean that our final budget needs to include that full opt-out amount, right?
Right.
That's the budget authority that we're, that we are.
Right.
Correct, not necessarily a final budget, so.
Whatever, whatever, if you would choose to pass an opt-out, whatever you choose to pass, you don't have to take if you find out you don't need it. The flip side of that is that if the taxpayers see the advertisement in the paper, that there's an opt-out, and they don't like that dollar amount, they can petition to refer it to a vote, which then we have the cost of a special election, so. Yeah. Lots to consider.
Wouldn't be able to go on in November election, that has to be decided soon.
It has to be done before October first and further, the other caveat to that is, if it's referred and it's shut down, it'd be passed July fifteen, so we couldn't even petition for another.
Right.
Well, I think if we pass an opt-out, then Travis should do an interview with David Elias explaining exactly why all this is so necessary.
And, and, and to add to what Michael said, then, if the election had to be before October first, the deadline for passing the final budget for next year is, I believe, September twenty ninth, so it's, you know. He probably wouldn't, yeah, he probably wouldn't even know before he had to pass the final budget. These timelines and statute just don't always line up nicely.
Cause why would they?
Right.
As far as a project. I, I, you really need to move forward, you need the room and you need the room, and plus, we gotta think about our taxpayers getting into your current place. I just think how much better this is gonna be.
And you know, honestly, I feel like when we did the bond vote the first time, and it failed because they wanted to save the courthouse, they wanted us to be in these buildings if we're keeping them, so if we're just letting part of it sit, what does that say? So if we're just letting part of it sit, what does that say? Uh, I, we're between a rock and a hard place.
So, I don't, I don't wanna throw a total different wrench in this, and I'm not trying to pick on anybody. But on the PD side, what renovations do you need to get in there?
Need to get in would, is very marginal, but also the, what's being requested to be done is, is really. It's tiny percentage of the work that's gonna be done anyway, it's taking out one drywall. Wall that's currently a closet and extending it into what's now the detective's office to make two separate offices, that's really just drywall work. Um, adding some plumbing to create a kitchenette from the kitchenette that's already here in the basement. Um, and then. A little bit of work in the bathrooms plus, you know, carpet and paint and adding electrical boxes, that's this whole scope of the work, so. All that being said, if none of that got done, as long as there's electricity, we can work.
Yeah, you guys could actually move down in there.
Correct.
Technically, they don't have, have to do anything.
Right, yeah.
But now's the time.
I, I, I realize that, and it's, but I didn't know the, you know, that's gonna be minimal cost, yeah, yeah.
So, you know, our cost is gonna come up here on this side.
Yeah.
You know, and, you know, is there, you know, I, our costs are gonna become from changing bathrooms itself around, it's gonna be the major cost. Is there a difference if somebody has to walk around to use the current bathroom situation?
Which I don't get, because the bathrooms are there, the plumbing's there, I mean, we're just talking fixtures, right?
They wanna wipe out those bathrooms here for more room for the.
Well, for, for court services for probation.
Yeah, there, there's gonna be three rooms. Or three, three offices.
They're gonna take out the two current bathrooms?
Yes.
Completely?
And they'll add the two new ones where those.
Cells are.
Sell that cell wall is what they call it, so.
So I mean, but, and they leave those bathrooms, put our offices over there? And I haven't seen the plan, so I don't know.
No, that wouldn't. There, there wouldn't be enough room for their, you mean on the side where the bathrooms are, where the cells are?
Yeah.
Yeah, they're. The way they're laid out, I don't think that would be a wise office space, it makes more sense to convert them into full bathrooms. Since the plumbing is already there.
And, and plus, they, they want that hallway to go all the way from the old main hallway all the way over. So that's, that's why we're, we're paying for those bathrooms where those jail cells are.
Yeah.
And I realize that.
Rest of the, the ADA, a nice forest, doll or whatever, so. And then by wiping out these bathrooms, that gives you those room for those three offices. Where that day, day room or whatever you call that room.
Yeah.
They'll make that bigger, then you can split that up in three offices. And then there'll be. Room for the public to enter that office through a reception window deal. And keep private bathrooms on that hall, other hallway for staff. But yeah, she, hers would be the lion's share of the, that six hundred thousand. Um, a hundred, I think, with easily covered what you wanna do.
Right.
Which, which sounds stupid for what you wanna do, and listed out, but I know, it just. Before we go into executive session, I did have one question on the bond amount, how did it go up twenty five thousand? Over last year?
The levy amount?
Well, no, the requested amount was twenty five thousand more.
I assume that that was something in shifting interest and principal.
It is, yeah, yeah, it won't be that exact amount every year, I go by the amortization schedule that they gave us.
At least that's the amount every year, and if anything, it should go down then.
I think it might, um.
But we're requesting more this year than we did last year.
Can pull up the schedule and. Send it to you guys.
About that briefly, but I thought it, my guess was that it was something to do with the. Use more of the principal, you know, it was all dispersed all at once, and then some of it's gone into an investment, that's recorded separately. Well, that's recorded separately, yes, but our payment should be the same. I mean, like your house payment, as long as you're not escrowing your property taxes and all that, and that house payment should stay the same every year.
Here, I'll send it to you guys, it does fluctuate each year. I will.
Thousand dollar house, that would be. Hundred and seventy dollars per year.
That opt out will be.
That point four two five five. Hundred a year, which it would have been with that other, that was gonna be point nine nine, something. Hundred a year, which it would have been with that other, that was gonna be point nine nine, something.
Have like twenty houses. Yeah. Yeah, which makes them higher.
Correct. That is weird.
Yeah.
Yep, strange, I thought, I thought some answer jumped out at me, but that's just strange. There's some years principals hire, other years interest is hired, it's like they tried to make it all.
I suppose it's the way they sold the stupid bonds.
Yeah, it's like they try to make, they try to make the payment the same each year rather than standard amortization schedule. I forget that it's not.
And they're on different interest rates.
Oh, that makes sense, so the coupon, you know, you've got different rates on them, so, yeah.
We ever pay extra?
We can't until after year ten.
After year ten.
Then you can pay ahead.
But we could put, if we were so lucky, we could put money into an interest bearing account towards that, you know, and then that would be offsetting again post up.
Which is where that's at, and you can't collect more interest than you pay. So anything over the four point oh two or whatever we've got, four point two five, which is funny because the average interest rate is four point seven seven, they're paying. But Tom Grimm said four point oh two, I thought, at the time. Um. So whatever it is, I mean, if you, if you're paying four point five and you're getting five percent interest. You gotta send that other half percent interest dollar amount to the feds.
But that shit, that's just for, for the proceeds of this law, right? So like, if we found ourselves in a situation where we're like, alright, we're, you wanna make sure that, you know, come year eleven. We're gonna start knocking this principal down, we could say we're gonna put away a hundred thousand dollars each year, we could put that into whatever interest bearing, best we can.
Yeah, we could.
And that, you know. Consider that as against the street economy, so. Would we be so lucky? I don't see that happy day.
Should we go into executive session now, though?
Yeah, it's had to work, probably the appropriate time.
Thanks.
Gonna wait a second, we can shut the door on the way out when we get into executive session.
Yeah, yeah.
Thank you. We're gonna wanna do it for. Well, let's see here, you're gonna wanna do one twenty five, two subsection three, uh, for both legal and contractual. Um, yeah. One twenty five, two subsection three.
Take the motion.
I move that we go into executive session, uh, by one twenty five, two subsection three for contractual and legal.
Second, I have a motion in a second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All the same sign.
I can send those in a little bit.
Motion passes. Move to come out of executive session.
Second.
Motion in a second, any further discussion? Hearing that, all those in favor say aye, I, I, all the same sign, we're in regular session. Thing else?
Yeah, we need to do, talk about that resolution.
No. Hearing you on that resolution.
I do, just pass that along.
Number one, seven fifty?
No, but.
No.
So it's, it's a lot better than that alternative, that first number.
Yeah.
So.
You wanna make the motion, I'll second you.
Move to approve up resolution twenty twenty five dash twenty for seven hundred fifty thousand.
I second. I have a motion in a second, any further discussion? Hearing that, roll call.
Gilbertson.
Hi.
Teasy.
Hi.
Brady.
Hi.
Rayla. Mockler.
Hi. Motion passes. I need everybody to sign this. Now, if we come up with a brilliant idea, we don't have to take that, right?
Yeah, that's.
Right.
Right. Setting yourself the schedule.
You know, if the remodeling project comes in miraculously less, can always reduce.
We're in.
We don't do levies until like October, so.
Yeah, or Jill comes online, you get her from, say the, say the name, or something.
Yeah, things could change between now and October, so.
Cause what you say, Michael, the end of the month, is that when we find out?
July twenty eighth.
July twenty eighth.
Right after our last three days. Yeah, and with the commission making the decision on July twenty ninth.
Is what, I'm sorry?
Which, we, we did it on a Monday, so the commission could make the decision on Tuesday.
We've got a meeting the next day, which you do, yeah, and we don't have to approve the budget until into September, so we still have time to.
Right.
Shuffle money around, as you can see.
Yeah, the last meeting of July, you'll have knowledge as to what. Because of how this is all designed, it's gonna be a scored system from the voting members. Put together with the dollar amount that will become, that will be opened on the twenty eighth. Formula will be completed, and then the twenty ninth, the comm, the committee will bring you the recommendation for you to either. Approve or, I suppose, table or reject.
So how would that work? Just say they came in higher. You said, you know, we gotta go back. If we develop our budget number.
What they should come back with is, give us a budget dollar amount of up to six hundred. This is what we can do under, uh, at the six hundred if they're over, and if you needed, you know, this is, or. Arguably, if you, if you needed more work, arguably it costs about this much more. It's kinda hard, at this point, we don't have the, anything back yet, so we don't know what, we don't even know the scope of the work is necessarily from the, the firms, they have to. They're now tasked with kind of creating what they came in, saw on the site. So all of that, I think, is still just too much up in the air.
So is it gonna be kind of a line item thing? Hopefully.
I hope so, to some degree, yeah, I mean, I think we're gonna have to see what different options cost. You know, there's also still potential for different options, right, like, we don't know.
That's part of the reason we went this route, right, because this gives us more flexibility.
Correct. Ultimately, though, if it's over, um, we would have to. Decide to start the RFQ and RFP process over with a new budget or hold off.
So you change the budget and then we kick it back out?
Correct. And then everything gets delayed again.
Yeah, gets delayed, but they could submit the same budget they had.
Correct.
They already, I mean, it's gonna go faster this time.
It would.
Would we have to pre, requalify, re- prequalify people and stuff, or?
I'd have to look at that document, but I think yes. So at least right, like now we're out of publication, like nothing has to be published anymore, but if we go back to that step one. Uh, everything, I think that's what would have to happen.
How would you have to requal?
Hence, the document we are working off of is the one that Tyler and Tiger created, and I think that's what it would call for. Because if we're now, it, it'd be a new project, and so it'd be, it would be having to be. Which has been, you know, for the benefit of the county to some degree too, there could be another firm out there. Wasn't available, now it isn't, maybe they come in and give us the best option, then we wouldn't wanna. You know, preclude them from now being involved, they're now available in a way they weren't three months ago.
Of course, you probably won't get. The RFQs for. From some of them again.
Right, probably same. Exactly. Hopefully, none of that's necessary, we'll know in three weeks or less.
Yeah, okay. Anything else? Then a motion to adjourn. Bag it, I have a motion in a second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All the same signs, we're adjourned.